March 6, 2017 at 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Kathleen, little call, please.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCampbell?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Okay. First on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. And we have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between Des Moines County, Des Moines County Secondary Roads and the City of Burlington for the construction of Madison Avenue. The second is a resolution approving an agreement with French Rennecor Associates to perform construction staking for the roundabout intersection at West Avenue and West Burlington Avenue. The third is a resolution awarding bid for construction of home at the southwest corner of South Fifth Street and Maple Street through the neighborhood stabilization, that's a word, program. The fourth is a resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Deness C. Maines doing business as Yellow Cab Company. The fifth is a resolution approving amendments to the terms of the Otter Island lease agreement. We also have five public hearings set. The first is consideration of purchase agreement for the property located at the southwest corner of South Fifth Street and Maple Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions that's for May 20 of 2017.
March.
What did I say?
May.
I'm already moving ahead. Thank you. March, God bless you, brother. The second is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway of Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street right-of-way at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. March 20, 2017. The third is a consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Ganon Street and Whittaker Street right-of-ways adjacent to the property located at 1104 Ganon Street, Burlington, Iowa, March 20, 2017. The fourth is a consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling the alley running from Columbia Street to Washington Street between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa. That is also May 20. And the fifth is a consideration of designation of the Deer Point Estates Urban Renewal Area and Urban Renewal Plan and Project. That is dated for April 3, 2017. And we also have three appointments.
The Historic Preservation Commission, Steve Freibert and Kay Weiss have asked to be reappointed for another three years, and then the City Planning Commission, Forrest Paterno, has said for a three-year term.
Well done. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Well done. Counsel?
Right with me.
We get a motion, though.
We approve all listed under item 1, consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right. Moving right along. Next, we have a presentation from Alliant Energy. I love it when they send Nancy because she always brings money. So Nancy?
Thank you.
How much money did you bring with you?
Thank you very much. Well, I'm saving that to the end. We don't want to spoil my big drum roll. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I do like to come annually and share what we call our community involvement and investment, our community annual partnership assessment. I was here last in August, and time really flies ordinarily. I do like to wait till kind of the middle of the summer because then I can kind of give you some updates on a little more activity, but we've had a lot going on early this year, so I thought it was timely to join you tonight. I usually like to talk about how many people we have working in this community and at our operations center on Roosevelt Road, we have 47 people from Burlington and the surrounding area. We also have our Burlington Generation Station on Sullivan-Salu Road, and we employ approximately 40 people at that facility, including one from the Homebase Iowa Program. I realize I neglected to state my name at the top. My name is Nancy Snod, S-N-A-A-D-T. I'm the account manager with Alliant Energy, and our office is on Roosevelt Road. Some of the other ways we support the community is through our foundation. Last year, we had seven nice projects and anything from the kids' family fun fest to a community event for hopefully your center, summer reading program. We were teaching area youth on safety and outdoor experiences. We also did present at the STEM Festival, and I took a check over to the Salvation Army for a new refrigerator freezer for their food bank program, although that's probably going to show up on next year's report. But we really appreciate these opportunities to be involved. Well, we're also very active in economic development in the Burlington area. I am supporting these groups with regular attendance and dues, and we also have our partnership programs, and they've been very active in engaging with those programs as well. So I work with Southeast Iowa Regional Development and, of course, Greater Burlington Partners. The main thing we like to do in Burlington, of course, is keep the lights on and the gas flowing. We did have some significant infrastructure investments in Burlington in 2016. On the electric side, we spent $521,000 on investments, and on the natural gas side, we spent about $526,000. We're also a pretty good-sized taxpayer in the county, and in Des Moines County, we paid $1,882,108 in taxes, and then in Burlington, we paid $421,923 in taxes. Some of the other ways we try to support the community is with energy efficiency programs, and we had participation from our customers. Over 2,117 customers participated in our programs in one form or another. The rebate incentive payouts were $610,988. We also did support the dealers that are engaging with our customers in the sale of things like energy-efficient furnaces and air conditioners, and the dealers recognized $45,302 for their support. And in Burlington and Des Moines County, we also had some really nice activity with our tree planting programs. There was a North Hill Neighborhood Project for $10,000, and it was planting along the city streets. And then we had another project, I'm sorry my print got cut off here, and it was planting a diverse mix of street trees, and that was $8,000. I think that was trying to help mitigate some of the negative impact from the Emerald Ash Borer problem of the last few years. The other thing I've been doing, doing a lot of work at Public Works, Nick and Brayden have been really active with some of the programs, and I was working with Brayden recently to identify some opportunities for energy efficiency audits. We just finished an audit over at Community Field with Chuck Brockett, and it was in February. I do have a copy of the report I could leave if anybody's interested, but we identified some good opportunities for them to target with their energy efficiency dollars, and many of those upgrades would indeed save energy and result in rebates. We also are scheduled to do an audit over at the Steamboat Center to see if we can help them identify some energy savings, and then the library will also be done this year. And if you had any other targets, we're happy to get those on the schedule. Now, the other thing Burlington's been a great partner with us is doing some pilot projects. I spoke with Mr. Farnow about a pilot that we had for our new billing system, and Burlington was the first customer that we worked with to iron out some of the stabilization with our new billing system with the summary bills because we were finding a couple of opportunities to be a little more efficient in that arena, and we needed somebody to kind of work with us to sort it out, and Burlington was great to be our partner on the pilot. Another pilot project we had this year was an energy efficiency new construction for the renovation of the Burlington Depot. This project was the first one of its kind where we took a historical building and looked at it through the lens of new construction and were able to get it into our rebate program for the first project of this nature with that particular program. Joining me tonight is Cindy Larson. Cindy was a lead architect from Klinger &amp; Associates, and it was largely due to her support and participation and engaging with the project because we ask an awful lot of the design team. They have to do a lot of the heavy lifting. They got to, first of all, make sure that the energy efficiencies are going to be there for your project. And I think that this one was particularly interesting because they wanted to keep the historical look of the building, and there were some special windows and other things like that, and then the equipment that you put in is going to realize 57,519 kilowatt-hours saved over a typical building like this, and that is just money on your bill that you're going to save going forward. And in addition to the kilowatt-hours, you also saved over 2,000 therms. You're going to save on the gas side, too. And resulting of these energy savings, we did qualify a new construction rebate for this depot remodel. I have the check here. I'm not sure who wants to be in the picture with me, but before we do that, I was excited to see the resolution approving the white boxing because if somebody in the restaurant business would be interested in utilizing our standard rewards for commercial equipment, we will have standard rewards for qualifying dishwashers, refrigerators and cooking equipment. So that might be something they want to keep in mind when they're selecting those appliances to get something that's going to work.
Thanks for the heads up on that.
Okay. Well, so may I, Mr. Mayor, with the picture?
Yes, you may. Are we all going to get a picture with this? Come on, guys. Go ahead, go ahead.
I only brought my iPhone 7, but you seen the pictures from this one?
Oh, my gosh. This is great.
So would you draw us a picture?
My marker. I want you to change that to the City of Burlington.
Okay. Just endorse it on the back and hand it over. Isn't that where, isn't that funny?
How much is it? I can't see it.
$14,000.
Wow. $330.
Okay. Now, could I trouble you to? Would you? I do. Okay, you do? Great. Then maybe just, you know. Okay. Should we stand in front of the City of Burlington? Great place to work, live and play. That always makes an excellent backdrop. Now, when you do the ribbon cutting over there, what I did at the hospital, I put the check on a tripod so everybody can see your investment. Wait a minute. I don't want my glasses in pictures. I have to tell you this.
Was that right? For giving glasses.
All right. Could you do a landscape one, would you?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I'm trying not to give too much to the mayor.
Perfect. Thanks, Nancy. Mr. Mayor? Oh, high five on this one. Thank you so much.
Nancy, I definitely appreciate it. Thank you for your hard work. Why don't you high five, too?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, Nancy, we appreciate all the work you do, and I love it when you bring checks. I told my brother that I always love to see you because you're always bringing checks, but I appreciate you just because of your hard work, period.
Thank you very much. I want to leave this information about the commercial cooking equipment. Mr. Farnow, could I put this in here?
Can I actually turn it over to the perspective of the law?
Oh, fantastic. There's a number on the back of that book. Okay? Cindy, I just still got it. Do you want to do that?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
See you later.
All right. Next, we have consideration of the budget. This is time set for hearing for consideration of fiscal year 2017 to 2018 budget. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Jim?
Well, actually, enclosed in your packet was the front notice page from the budget, for the budget that lists out the property taxes to be collected. But Stephanie was going to do an overview of some of the general components of the budget. She gave a preview of this last week, and we'll go through it again now.
Okay. So this is the proposed FY '18 budget. I'll just go through, like Jim said, some of the highlights. This slide is going to show you the comparison of revenues by fund from the fiscal year '17 and '18. A lot of the funds are pretty stable. The large differences are in our business type, which includes a sewer increase, our sewer fund increased by 2.5 million, and that's due to projects, capital projects that are being done out of the sewer fund, and also Waterworks increased about 980,000. Burlington Waterworks budget for the state document is included in ours, so in all the numbers, they're in part of the business type. Capital projects, obviously, you can see there is a large increase compared to last year, too. We have several large projects going on for the next fiscal year, which they'll be detailed later, but the flood, the police building are probably the two largest ones. And then this is a snapshot of the revenues actually by function. This is a report coming off our OpenGov software that we have that's online that is, has a separate, you can see, if you go to our website, burlingtoniowa.org, OpenGov is a site you can click on and go in, and anyone can look at our finances there. So you can see our, what makes up the largest is property taxes, 31%, or I should say taxes. Property taxes make up 14 million of that 20 million, and non-property taxes, what we call them, like our lost local option sales tax is 4.2 million. Hotel motel is 900,000, makes up the rest of that number. Also, you'll see charges for service are almost 20% of that 12 million, 8.7 million is our sewer revenues we bring in. Ambulance makes up 1.1 million. Intergovernmental revenues are about 16% of our total revenues, and that includes grants, which could be federal, state or local. And the miscellaneous revenue is a rather large number. That actually is where our bond proceeds go, and so this fiscal year, we're budgeting over 16 million of bond proceeds. Also included in miscellaneous revenues are, there's a million dollars of sales concession that's coming from our venue works. Donations are approximately a million. And then reimbursement of expenses are about 700,000. Any questions on the different types of revenues we have in the budget? Okay. So here, we'll show you the comparison of expenditures by our different programs, the way we budget. You can see there's slight increase in public safety. That's due to the increase in personnel that we're adding, two in police and one in fire and a part-time position in nuisance. They all fall under the public safety category. The other large increase is the business type expenses. Those are, you know, our sewer projects that are going on, and then capital projects, very large increase. So that's our flood, police building, street projects, all the projects we have going on. And this is the report out of OpenGov. It shows it again by the type of expense. So personnel services is where all the wages and benefits are, and that makes up approximately 30% of our expenses. Contract services, another 31%. This is where we put our professional services expenses, engineering, that makes up a large number of that. And that's, again, large this year because of all the projects that we have going on. Capital outlay, that again is 23%, and that's based on a lot of our capital projects going on. Debt service, 11%, that's the amount that we'll pay for principal and interest in the next fiscal year. So this is a slide just showing the proposed property tax increase of 40 cents, and then it lists the history over the last eight years where we've had increases in how much and then years that we haven't had any increase. So I did a simple calculation based on $100,000 assessed value for a residential property and how much it will increase due to this 40-cent property tax increase. So you can see the rollback number increased, so even if we would have had no property tax increase, individuals would have seen an increase in their property tax bill just based on the increase in the rollback. So our property tax increase increased it by about 2, 2 and 1/4, and you can see annually that's going to increase their bill by $43.70. You break that out monthly, $3.64, so. Any questions on that? And then I just showed you what it would increase for assessed commercial value of 200,000. They're going to see an increase in their tax bill of $72 or $6 a month. So what's being added with the property tax increase? We're adding?
Stephanie?
Sure.
Just a second. On that, on the property tax increases, the $43.70, is that the property tax and the rollback difference?
Yeah, that's the total increase.
Yeah, it's about $20, $21 was about the amount just for the change in the rollback percentage and 22 for the change in the tax levy, 40-cent change.
I had a couple of people call me and ask me, wanted me to make sure we clarified that.
Yes, okay.
And the percentage of increase for the rollback's about 2.35%, correct?
Yes, that's what I calculated. So this is showing you what we're adding in our budget this year that will pay for, that'll be paid by the property tax increase. Two police officers, their training and equipment and cars they're need, one firefighter and one part-time nuisance staff. This is just a slide breakdown of where exactly does my tax dollars go. So on that $100,000 house, you're going to pay $930 annually, and this breaks that $930 down. You can see, and these are net numbers, so fire is less than police because that includes like the ambulance revenues that help pay for the fire expenses. The library's $56. Debt service makes up $216 of that $930. General admin, 72. Parks and Rec, 67. So it's just a snapshot of, you can see where your money actually goes to. And this is how we compare to other cities. This was based on our FY '17 levy and everyone's FY '17 levies, where we fall in with other cities that have population over 20,000. You can see the cities that have the lower taxable value per capita are the ones that have a higher tax rate. We don't have as much valuation for the amount of people we have in the city, so we are having to charge more to get, to generate the same dollar amount to support our services. So I'll just go through some of the factors that are impacting the budget. Overall, we had a 2.4% increase in taxable valuation. TIF increased about 3% and our regular taxable valuation, I'm sorry, TIF decreased by 3% and our regular taxable increased 3.14%. And this is the dollar amount that we'll bring in. So with our property taxes, it's 11.5 million compared to 10.9 million we brought in this year, increase of 611,000. Our health insurance premiums, they came in at 3.9% increase. We've budgeted at 5%. Ipers is staying the same this year, and municipal fire and police pension is decreasing slightly. You can see that. And this slide's just explaining our health insurance cap. This is the language that we have in our union contracts currently, that overall, our health insurance cannot increase more than 5% or we will need to make plan design changes or increase, you know, co-pays, anything like that. This also shows for the current, this fiscal year '18, there is a 4% employee contribution. So here's just a snapshot of what's in our general fund. You can see we, the revenues, oh, sorry, this is, yeah, this is revenues. It's going to bring in $12.8 million. Basically, you'll see the decrease in the intergovernmental from the fiscal years is we had a bus grant that was budgeted in last year's, but we didn't receive it. And then miscellaneous increased that 206, and that was due to us budgeting different for the auditorium and venue works. We're putting their true revenues in budgeted and their true expenses because that's what we do at the end of the year, and that was not in the FY '17 budget. So the net amount for the auditorium is not different, it's just we've increased the revenues and increased the expenses to show what will actually be going in our books. And you can see that in our expenditures here. You can see the increase in fire and police compared to the last budget. Those are based on the new personnel. Auditorium, again, is increased because the revenues increased, I increased the expenses. And then transit, the same thing. We had that bus budgeted in FY '17, and it's not there in '18. But other than that, you'll see there's slight increases in each of the other activities, and you can see how much the general fund is made up of, you know, over 55% is fire and police of the general fund.
Stephanie, could you explain how the expenditures can be at the 19 million and the revenues are just a little over 12 million?
Sure. These are strict dollar amounts coming into the general fund, and then what we do on a, or by annual basis, or, yeah, we do, twice a year, we do transfers in. So we'll be transferring in the local option sales tax that we collect. That is not revenue to the general fund, it's a transfer in, and that, you'll see later in a slide, we transfer, well, in our next slide, you can see. We transfer into the general fund approximately $7.4 million of revenue, and that's where we'll get to the 20 million revenues, and then we just transfer out 900,000, that's our hotel motel fund. That actually gets receipted into the general fund, and then we transfer it out to be accounted for in a separate special revenue fund. So there you can see, we're going to have an increase in the overall, in the general fund of 147,000 for the fiscal year '18, even though you only see the $12 million of revenue coming in, it's the transfers. We also, when you collect property taxes, employee benefits, get, they're receipted into a special revenue fund. Those are all to help pay for the expenses in the general fund, so they get transferred in. They're part of that $7.4 million.
What is that, 147, 785, what does that represent?
The increase in the general fund that we have budgeted.
So that's an increase in the balance at the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. Any questions on this? You'll see the decrease in the transfers out of the general fund. Basically, we're not transferring out money to cover the deficits like we've had in the past, so that's the good news.
That's good news.
So overall, the sewer fund, we're, we have budgeted a 3% increase in the sewer fees as of '07. Again, this is due to increased operating cost and then our anticipated future debt requirements that we'll need to comply with the sewer separation. Solid waste is budgeted to increase a quarter, which is 1.1%. So the $13.75 monthly bill will go to $14 per month, and this is due to we have an increase in the landfill tipping fees and also our recycling fee, the waste management fees going up 10 cents. So here's just a laundry list of our capital projects that we have budgeted. You can see we've got quite a few this year, and that's why you see the increase in expenses. The flood's the largest, 7 million. Police building renovations, 3.5 million, and then several street projects that make up basically the rest. Any questions on any of these? So I'll recap what we have in our hotel motel fund. We're budgeting $900,000 this year in revenue. That, again, is a split. We get 70% of the revenue up to 700,000, and then 30% goes to the convention and visitors' bureau, and then anything over 700,000, the city gets 60% and CVB gets 40%. So the expenditures we have budgeted is 1.1 million, which is slightly higher than the 900,000 revenue. Some of the categories have balances that have been, you know, built up over the years, so we're spending some of those balances down this year. But CVB is budgeted to get 290,000. The parks improvements, you can see the items that we have budgeted to be paid out of those funds, the culture assistance. And then the special revenue is, or, sorry, special projects is where we have a lot of the other projects budgeted there. The golf course pump house is the larger one. We also do recreation support to the general fund of 195,000, and that's helped to pay for parks maintenance. and that's helped to pay for parks maintenance that's going on in the general fund and other recreation. We have, the swimming pool is in the general fund, day camp, so, and then the community field utilities. So hopefully after the energy audit, that number will be going down. So our sales tax fund, we've got budgeted four point two million there, which is an increase of forty-two thousand. I know if you'll read in Jim's budget letter, basically the hotel motel and the local option sales tax are kind of stable this year. We'd seen an increase in the past few years and now they're kind of leveling off, so. And we have about four point two million budgeted expenditures going to be coming out of that fund too. You'll see two point three million will go to the property tax relief, which means it's being transferred into the general fund. All the police officer amounts and equipment that also will get transferred back into the general fund. And then just, here's a list of other things that have been budgeted to come out of sales tax. The transit bus purchase is a larger one. Any questions on any of these? So this slide, I just thought I would recap of how we've been doing on eliminating our existing account deficits. You can see back on June thirtieth thirteen, our balance was two point seven million. After we make the transfers in fiscal seventeen, they, they will all be zeroed out, so we don't have anything budgeted in FY eighteen to eliminate any deficits, so.
That rocks.
Past deficits, I should say. And then just a quick recap of our projected debt limit for FY eighteen. We do show it going back down to that sixty-six point four five percent. You can see we're projecting it in this current year to, to rise slightly above our seventy percent goal that we want to keep it at, but then in eighteen, it will be going back down. Okay, that's all I had. Any questions on that?
That's good for now. Okay, this time we'll, I'll take questions that we have from the audience regarding the budget. I'm going to ask that you would be brief in your statements, if you have any, please, we can keep things rolling, but if you have any. I wasn't looking at you, Leon, I was surveying the grounds around you. You come on first then. All right. Mr. Crowder? We're going to take questions or comments about the budget. That's, that's what we're going to take right now. Go ahead. Your name and your address, please.
Mike Crowder. Mike Crowder, Burlington, Iowa. I see the increases and that's understandable. I'm in business myself. What I didn't see anywhere is, did we find anywhere to cut anything? Did we make any cuts anywhere or we just increased everything? I know, you know, Tim, you said you was going to go through with a fine tooth comb and see if you could find any cuts. I just didn't know if we found anything because, you know, not only are we raising the property taxes, they are also going around right now reassessing everything in town too, so there's another raise coming.
I, I'll answer part of that. I did come up with a lot of cuts and they got reversed. We are, we are going to cut twenty thousand from the economic development fund, which is programmed in and there was another small cut. I think there was twenty-five, about twenty-five thousand from the fire department for some heart monitors that thankfully they got a grant for and.
You had a vehicle out of park, or no, the equipment out of parking for electronic ticketing that was pulled out. I mean, no, not major things and, you know, for the, on an operating ongoing basis, I think there's still going to, the council has expressed a desire to go through a process of reviewing departments and seeing what they can, can do for, for cuts as they move into this, the following year. And I don't know exactly what the council will be looking for with that. I think part of that will need to be a discussion from the council and general, general programs. Do they want to see any departments look at cutting any specific services that they provide? They did not do that in the course of this budget, as you're asking, but they have expressed a desire to look at that as we move forward into this off season.
Okay. Reason, reason why I say, bring that up is because, just a simple thing, I'm part owner of the hydraulic shop out West Burlington. I worked with Terry McDowell on some cylinder rebuild kits and they were paying like two hundred and sixty-seven dollars or something. I sold him six kits for under a hundred dollars, so maybe we just need to watch where our internal spending is going and maybe price shop a little bit on some of that. I know that's a little numbers compared to what we're talking about, but that can add up fast, you know. He says they go through them pretty regularly and, you know, I'm, I'm a taxpayer and if I can save the city money, I'm going to do what I can do.
Something similar to that. I think Stephanie is going to have a presentation here, I don't know if it's this next work session, but over one of the ensuing work sessions to talk about some of the efforts that we've done in the last year and a half to go through, do an audit of our expenditures to do some, some similar to what you're speaking of.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment I'd like to make.
Give your name and address, please.
Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Rose Kendall, six twenty-one Barrett. I am sorry. First of all, I support all the police department and fire department and what they've been up against and I applaud Jim Furnell for the job he's done so far, but there has to be a better answer than the tax you have decided on. I no longer get raises on social security, it goes to Medicare, which has raised every year. As well as the water, the sewer, the car insurance, house insurance and other things I don't want to list here. All expenses are very necessary. I'm losing about a hundred dollars per month income and I moved back here because I thought this would be a safe, economical place to live in my old age. I was wrong on both counts. Next will come higher gas prices and what will you do next year in another big, for another big raise when it comes to city manager or somebody else like the school principals? And I say principals because we have more than we need. And how are we going to pay for the new police building? And it seems we have no choices in our government here except the election time and that has, that doesn't seem to help either, so thank you for your time. I just want you to know, next time, think of us senior citizens. God bless.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Rose.
Anybody else, comments or, Leon?
Leon Chehan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I'll try to be shorter this year than I was last. There's more people here. I can certainly sympathize for, for those that are on social security. My wife just retired, we're there. I never thought I'd be married to a woman that old, but.
You got some kind of nerve, Sam.
Couch tonight, folks. Anyway. My problem with the city budget is I just don't think we're very forthright on economic development. Start with, for those that don't know, I'm an accountant. I have a four-year degree. I'm not currently practicing because the way they treat accountants, it's a pretty miserable job anymore. I'm also not CPA and for the, this meeting, the difference between a CPA and a cost accountant, I'll just say, I don't have to be as politically correct being critical of the budget. The problem I have with the budget, the financial statements, your annual financial report, is we're not transparent on what's costing for economic development. The number I saw on the screen was two point six million dollars. Just looking at the agenda tonight, and I know the rules around here as far as discussing other agenda items, but I just want to point this out. You had two point six million dollars for economic community and economic development. Items on your agenda either for tonight or down the road, you have a resolution for your bonds for the flood wall. I consider that economic development. That's seven million dollars. You're already over what you claim in your budget. You're talking about white boxing the depot, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That to me is economic development. In future meetings, you're talking about TIF for Deer Point Estates. The total for that is one point four million dollars. So there's a big disconnect from what you're saying in the budget is economic development and what you're really spending for economic development. Just to give you an idea, some of the other things that, that have come up in the last year or so, you did incentives for what you call Manor Mall. I have another name for it, I'll spare you that tonight, but the total package there was about ten million dollars in incentives, if that is built out like planned. You're coming up for the new construction property tax abatements. Last year, that was two point six million dollars awarded. You have an assessment reduction for the Fund City, that's a half a million dollars a year. The factory that Randy Weingard has on Mount Pleasant Street, they get a rebate of one hundred thousand dollars plus or minus. The Chamber of Commerce, who have a variety of sources, gets eight hundred thousand dollars from the city, not two hundred and ninety. You have withholding tax credits and grants you, that is money from the state, but it's still, from what I can tell, administered by you. That's one point five million. Folks, just that list there, you're looking at twenty million dollars, not two million. And the problem I think is how you book these transactions and Stephanie, you're an accountant, you might understand this a little bit. When you make an award for incentives like you're talking about down the road for the, the new subdivision, as far as I'm concerned, at that time you make that award, you should recognize the liability for the entire amount and a deferred charge. And as you go through the years and the developer gets part of that as an offset on his property taxes, you would reduce that liability, but at the same time, you should be charging an expense account for economic development and that's not being done. And the problem with all that, all the outstanding economic development awards, assessment reductions, rebates, whatever, I haven't added it up for sure, it's really hard to dig it all out, but you're talking a liability that's not on your books of nearly one hundred million dollars. That's not a hundred thousand dollars, that's one hundred million. That's staggering. Given that there's only ten thousand households here, that's a lot of money for each and every house. And it gets worse.
I'm going to ask you to taper just a little bit.
I'll taper. I'm about done here. It gets worse. Not only do you have that liability, but you have an issue with aging roads, two failing bridges, aging water system, aging sewer system. You, you've got probably another couple hundred million dollars that you're going to have to spend either in the form of reduced tax revenues or increased expenditures just to provide essential service. And that doesn't show in your financial statements. Alls I'm asking for is an honest budget and some people wonder, well, why taxes are going up? When you give economic incentives to one party, I have to pay for that. The rest of us that own our house and have lived here for years have to pay for Randy Weingard's taxes, for cases' taxes. That's not fair. Everybody should pay their own fee.
Before things get out of hand, this, we got to keep everybody, one person at a time, please. Everybody's going to, you can get a chance to talk, but one person at a time, please. Go ahead. But can we, can we take this?
Yeah, I'm getting to the final point. Again, we need to be honest in our accounting for economic development. It's the biggest single expense you have and it's not recorded that way in your budget and it's not recorded that way in your annual financial reports. And the problem is, to summarize to the exact point, when you reduce somebody's taxes, even if you don't write them a check, that's still an expense and that's where the problem is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, then.
Did you have comments?
I have comments, yes. And I know our time is precious and I'll try very hard to keep it within fifteen minutes.
I'm going to have to have you keep it with, underneath that, sir.
Well, I have to say this.
But I need your name and address and.
I'm getting, but I have to say.
But I can't give you fifteen minutes.
Well, we'll see. My name is Scott Diehl. That's D I E H L. I live at six one three North Garfield Avenue here in the city of Burlington. I want to take this opportunity to, to address the Honorable City Council and thank them for listening to my rally cry to protect low wage and elderly homeowners. As our new president said recently, the time for small thinking is over. You, my elected city officials, are small-minded by raising our property taxes at a time when our economy is very tight. We need bold, innovative, smart and most importantly compassionate city leaders. Your property, your property tax increase will kill the American dream of home ownership in this decaying city. That's neither smart nor democratic. It is downright foolish at a time when wages in this city have been frozen, trimmed and unlivable for a majority of homeowners. We do not make a livable wage of at least a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour from corporate America, while at the same time you people hand out welfare to the rich. Welfare to the rich. Developers and corporate bigwigs. With all the new corporate developments and stores popping up recently throughout the city, the city tax revenues should be up. You should have extra money. But when you give away homeowners' hard-earned taxes to the rich, the majority in Burlington suffer. Stop making the rich richer and start giving relief to the elderly, disabled, working men and women who hang on barely to their homes in this town. I ask you, I beg you, as would Jesus Christ, do you care about the most vulnerable in this city? Do you have the least bit of compassion and love for the majority of homeowners in Burlington? If this city council moves forward in increasing our property taxes, you, single-handedly, are forcing people out of their homes and I say to you three, shame on you. I am fortunate tonight to be here with my beautiful mother-in-law, Mrs. Helen Rawlings. She has lived in her home here in Burlington for over fifty years. She is on a fixed income and is ninety years old strong.
Thank God.
Your property tax increase will hurt her directly. Do you even care? The vast majority of homeowners, homeowners in Burlington look like my ninety-year-old mother-in-law, but they also look like my courageous wife Paula, who for over forty years has worked tirelessly in the healthcare field. Forty years. That's a long time, yet she still makes much less than the standard livable wage of fifteen dollars an hour for us to survive. She works for a huge corporation based out of Kansas City, Bickford Cottage, an assist living facility located right here in the low-wage city of Burlington. Is that fair? Is that just, I ask you? Or do you even care? Now, on to reality when it comes to finances. Unfortunately, due to my multiple health conditions, I am on social security disability. I get a poultry, six hundred and fifty dollars a month, period. That's it, Mr. Mayor. That does not even cover our monthly mortgage. Do you care? I continue to plead with you three tax raising amigos, Fleming, Davidson and flip-flop artist Mary Campbell. Fleming, Davidson, and flip-flop artist, Mary Campbell. As the Hawkeye said, eh?
Sorry.
We already pay 2,000 dollars a year in property taxes, another 800 dollars a year for sewer and water, another 2,000 dollars in federal taxes, another 1,000 dollars in state taxing, and a whopping 4,000 dollars in health insurance premiums that have skyrocketed in addition to the 3,000 dollar debt that we owe Great River Hospital because of our health. The 700 dollars a year for home insurance, another 400 dollars a year in car insurance, and the list continues to go on and on and on.
I'm gonna ask you to taper Mr. Diehl.
And once again, I ask you, do you care? Wonderful homeowners in Burlington can't hang on much longer. We need relief, not more burden by increasing our property taxes. You could learn from a pro. An ounce of wisdom and innovation plus vision is needed desperately on this city council.
Mr. Diehl.
You could all learn a thing or two from our new pastor at Christ Episcopal Church, Father Carl Mann. Our small church was struggling, but he came in almost a year ago and instead of preaching for us to give more until it hurts, he became an efficient and effective administrator. Line item by line item in the church's budget, he single-handedly slashed waste and non-essential services as you people can and must do now. Finally, this is an issue of morality. You, as a city council, must do the right thing and reverse your ill-thought-out property tax increase. Have some compassion. You are destroying the lives of the most vulnerable homeowners in Burlington, and that is appalling and pathetic on your part as so-called Christians. I beg you, I plead with you, please, no new property tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diehl.
Thank you. How you doing, Helen? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Helen Rawlings, 1215 South 14th. And I am the president of the Senior Center. And I'm very glad to be here. I do want to, beyond the half of the senior citizens, we have a problem. We don't have enough parking spots. Down, we are on 5th and Jefferson Street. We have a big parking space down there where we, I can put our coins. We do have car parties that last four or five hours, but the most important thing we have is the people that have canes, crutches. We have, the city gives us 15, uh, their permits. We go into the Senior Center, get this, they have permit, put them in the car, go back to the Senior Center. At 4 o'clock in the afternoon, we do the same. It's a, going on with our senior citizens. I would like to suggest to maybe have a little sticker, maybe that we could put on our cars so we could park in the back and still not have to walk up and down. And it's just a, a big thing that the senior citizens are very concerned about. We do not have, a lot, a lot of people don't come down on account of that. So I would like to, I know Sean has come in and he's talked to us very nicely. So I do hope that you can do something about our parking for the elderly.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know what she's talking about.
Does anybody else have a question or comment about the budget? And this is about the budget.
Yes, David Selman, 226 South 10th. Talking about increasing in this, this tax increase. You know, I'm a little concerned because I watched my water bill continue to skyrocket for the last, it's over the last year, about two or three times. Sewer, and we started seeing increases, but even with our trash, we went up on those tags, but now we still get an increase. I mean, I would like for y'all to really take a serious look, see if there could be some cuts somewhere so that we don't have to burden the people with all taxes all the time. I know, I like to see our city grow too. But I think a lot of times with the incentives that we give out, because I remember the deal about the pool out here when we were supposed to be the city and Randy Weingard, all of a sudden the city got out. But then all, over a period of time to pay it back, that could have been money the city could have had quickly. But let's look at how we could, if there's some possibilities to cut some things so that we won't have to continue to increase taxes. Because, you know, I pay taxes, plus property's gonna go up again. And so let's look at, if the city can find a better way that we can do some things, I'd like to see it done.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Selman. Anybody else have questions over the budget?
Brady Starling, 517 South 7th Street, Burlington, Iowa. I was here a couple of months ago, and this is, either way, whatever way is, you see to raise or not to raise, but I spoke this a couple of months ago, and it was concerning a raise. And I just had mentioned, I didn't mind the raise, but I just mentioned, I would like to see the raise from the bottom, top down, but that's bygones now. But I was here, and I mentioned this, not just because of tonight, but I mentioned this, I just said, I would not like to see my taxes raised. Not because of, I'm not saying this because of the fire department or police or sewer or whatever. I just mentioned that, not knowing that this was gonna come up tonight. So it's kind of like a prophecy in advance. Then, I want to say this. We're here tonight, and probably we may leave here with a tax raise, which some may be happy, and maybe the tax won't be raised, and some will be happy. So it's kind of hard to please everybody. But I do know this, that I have stood here in the midst and comments was made to my group that weren't made to other groups. So it seems that there have been some favoritism or those here and disregard others. So it was told to us, and I'm sure you can probably go through the budget and find some, maybe something that might have been overlooked or maybe could be cut out, you know? But anyway, the thing that bothers me overall is we still have those on the council that spoke those negative things to us. If you, if you ask me, I'll tell you, I won't open my mouth. And the same time, you encouraged Mr. Scott to come to a meeting, and it was just us two. And I shared some things with him, but no one never called me in, no one never asked me to come, no one ever asked to hear what I had to say. You know, it kind of makes you feel like you're not a part. I think I would have made a better decision. When a taxpayer, and you encouraged one of the city council members to go and hear what this taxpayer had to say, no one contacted me. So it kind of, you know, it makes you feel as a partiality. Certain people get what they want, others get sent away empty. That may be what happened tonight. Some may get what they want, some, whenever you vote on it, may not get what they want. But I know in my case, it could have been done better. I'm still paying taxes, and the other individuals are probably not paying taxes. So whatever you do tonight in your decision-making, and you can't tell me that isn't partiality, I know better. You can say it, but I know better. I haven't been here that long to be a fool. But one of the things I'm concerned, whatever you do with the budget, whatever you raise it or whatever, just make sure you include Gladys White Park in it, as I'm asking, a shelter place. We've been there for years, and this should have, in my judgment, should have been a shelter house there a long time ago. You drive through there, you drive all the other parks, and basically there is a shelter house. Most of us sit there in the sun in June, I put up a makeshift, and that should not have to be being taxpayers. And not only that, that if you go elsewhere, and I understand that there is certain money there to start on it anyway. You go to the other park over there where it was torn down, and the city manager could tell us how much that costs. A hundred or so, oh, he know what it costs. But you mean you can invest a little, or you can, in the budget. So whatever happens tonight, I'm just asking that that be included in the budget, and hopefully in the future, we could have some toilets and things down at Gladys White Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience on the budget?
My name is Ron Saroyan, 2712 Clearview. I got here a little late, so I don't know all that's going on, but I'm concerned about the taxes. In the newspaper, you said you're gonna hire firemen and policemen, which I probably agree to that. One of them was, you're gonna hire a part-time nuisance inspector. Okay, is that right? For 20,000 dollars a year. Okay, I've had rental units for 49 years. I've dealt with these guys down here. I get along with them pretty good, but they used to nitpick me all the heck up over little simple things, okay? Now, if you're hiring this nuisance department, is that, where's he, what office is he gonna be working out of? Is he gonna work out of the apartment, the ones that inspect the apartments?
Eric, how are you gonna struc, would you structure that?
The rental inspectors are also the nuisance inspectors, so it'd be out of that.
Okay, now, is there gonna be three guys down there working? There's been two.
Three individuals.
Why do you need three now?
This one wouldn't be doing rental inspections, it'd be focused on nuisance inspections.
Okay, I agree, okay. Now, I've talked to Jim, and I've talked to some other people on the council over the years, and even down in the inspection department. And they say the ordinances have to be changed. Like, if you go around town, I lived here all my life. If you go around town, I don't take any of you guys around. I've complained to city people. Look at that house there, look at that, there's junk in the yard, all kinds of crap on the front porches of people's houses, people parking in their, in their, in their yards. Okay, if you're gonna hire a part-time guy, I think you better get the ordinances changed, that you can go around and get these people to clean up their porches, get the junk cars off the street, and ta, take these houses that have been trashed, and people start tearing them, fixing them up, and they don't do nothing with them. It's been going on for years, and I can give you plenty of examples. If you want to go around with me, I'll take you around town. I had apartments for years, and I still got some, and I had to keep mine up. But the problem is, you don't do nothing with the people that own the homes.
Sir, just, and I hate to interje, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm just saying, this was, we had this conversation, Mr. Scott was the one that brought this to the table, is why we, why we hired this other position, and it was for just that reason that you were saying.
Well, then, are you gonna change some of the ordinance to get some of these laws changed?
We're trying to untie the hands of the whole department, so.
Pardon?
It's ongoing. We're trying to untie the hands of the entire department so that we can get some stability, so that we, we can get rid of these problems that, that you're speaking of.
Right, okay, okay. Now, with this 4% increase, I don't understand all this TIF financing. Like, if I wanted to build a 300-dollar, 300,000-dollar house, I can get TIF financing, right? And don't have to pay taxes, what, for five or 10 years? Is that correct?
You can get a tax abatement for three years, full tax abatement or a...
So I don't pay any taxes for that many period of time, okay? Who picks up the slack when they don't pay taxes? That's what I'm finding out, because where I live, my taxes gone up terrible. So if a person builds a 300,000-dollar house, he should be able to afford the taxes on it. Don't put the burden on me to pay his fair taxes for three or 10 years. I don't, I don't like it. I think you guys need to look at this a little bit. I mean, it's nice to have new houses, but that's why your tax, our taxes are going up. Well, I hope you guys take that into consideration, that you get something done, because I think Burlington, the residential neighborhood, a lot of it in town, has been going downhill. And I bet there are a lot of people right here who agree with me.
Yes.
They're right here now.
We're not supposed to do that. You know what I'm saying? We can't do that in here. It's just the, it's just the rules. We've got rules that we hand out at the, at the table.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anybody else on the budget? One wants, okay.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, can I get a motion though?
Okay. Motion to close.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamell?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Your Honor, I have a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Second.
Second.
Kathleen?
Oh, hold on a second, mayor. I'd like to offer an amendment. Your Honor, I move to remove the word "published" from the ordinance as described, and so the sentence would read, "The property tax levy is", and then replace 16.33632 with 16.3008.
Is there a, what are those again, Jim?
Move to remove the word "published" and change from 16.33632 to 16.3008. And if I, someone would second, I could explain.
I'll second it.
I visited with Mrs. Stoker. I wanted to try to find some way to reduce what we were doing, and I wanted to get down to at least 16 dollars and 30 cents, and it's as close as we could calculate together. She worked on this, it was 16.3008, which is about 26,500 dollars in reduction that we'd have to come up with. And I would propose that the library budget could absorb that 26,500. And I want to emphasize that that's not a cut in the library budget, because they already, they were in, scheduled to increase by 31,480. So they'll still have an increase of 5,000-plus dollars, right at 5,000 dollars. That's my proposal, and I hope you'll consider it. I calculated that, that's not a huge savings for most people, but it's a couple dollars, every penny, I think, makes a difference at this point. I'd like to do more, but I don't think I can get agreement for more. So that's what I'm offering.
Is there, is there anybody on the council that wants to second that?
I already did.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yes.
Then let's, let's vote on the amendment.
Okay, this is on the amendment. Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamell?
No.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Okay, as amended.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCamell?
No.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay.
So we have no budget.
So, yeah. Do I have, do I have another, do I have anything else on the table?
What do we do next? I mean, you got me confused now.
Because we could, we could come back with, if somebody can make a...
You could have a special meeting between now and next, next week when the budget's due. Otherwise, it goes into effect at, is it 10% below the previous year's tax asking? I think that's an automatic thing if we don't file.
So you were against cutting the library? So you were against cutting the library?
I want it as is. That's where I'm at, Bob.
Just wondering.
Yeah, that's where I am.
Tam, aren't you?
That's where I was a week ago.
I'm opposed to the budget as it's presented, period.
And I am confused.
Is there anybody wanting to present the budget, to re-present the budget as?
Yes.
Nobody's there?
Yes, I'll do that.
Well, you have to reconsider, you have to move to reconsider. One of you people that voted no, you're going to have to move to reconsider. You're going to do that. Am I right?
Right.
Correct.
On his amendment?
No.
You just, on the final vote there, one of the three who voted against would have to have a motion to reconsider.
Can I get a motion for reconsideration?
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. This is as.
Now, you have to vote on that motion. Am I correct?
Yes, motion, we're going to vote now on the motion just to reconsider. Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going to vote on, and we're.
The original.
Okay, okay, so.
No.
Do you want to present, what am I missing here?
The motion on the floor is the one that is amended with my amendment.
Right.
So you need to come up with something else, folks, if you want.
You're going to have to amend what Jim amended.
We've got budget on the book. I mean, we've already got it written down.
Right.
So what am I missing here?
So I would say, like, I would like to amend the amendment to.
Well, just, no, for a new amendment.
Now, wait a minute, I'm confused.
An amendment to read as presented.
Make a motion to amend as.
A motion to amend, to read as presented.
Right.
Originally presented.
Originally presented.
Originally presented.
Yes.
Second.
It's already presented. Moved in second.
Okay, this is on the motion.
This is on the, right.
No.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now, on the amendment. Let's vote.
On the motion.
On the motion.
On the resolution as amended.
Tell me exactly what it is we're voting on.
This is, this is as previously.
As the originally, that motion put it back to how it was originally presented in council package.
Right, which is the 16.33632.
Right, that's correct.
So an aye vote would be. Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
That's the budget 2017. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. Again, I want to thank everybody that helped throughout this process. Anytime we get through a process like this, there's going to be people that are happy, people that are upset. It's, but we're all trying to get to the same place, so we do appreciate everybody that was a participant in that.
Mayor, I just hope that we are committed as a council to review the budget every work session, every council meeting from here forward, and not wait until the budget process next year, where we don't have enough time to seriously look at possible cuts, and/or making financial decisions that aren't healthy for the community. And that we really commit ourselves to doing that throughout the rest of this year in finding a way to fund the remaining positions for the police and fire department, and to fund those positions that we just funded tonight without having to raise taxes, and without losing services that we're providing now in other departments. And there's options out there, there's opportunities. Like, we need to look at all of them.
That's fine.
Anybody else have anything before? Ordinance?
Yes, I have an ordinance for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use as a potable water source?
Second. Mr. McGregor?
That is correctly pronounced. Yet again, this, the reading of this ordinance will restrict non-potable wells within the map area. Do you have that, Eric? Around the gas station located at Central and Madison. It's the same reading in the language. It's the potable well ordinance, but in there, it restricts the non-potable wells. So, for instance, we allow, by permission from the water works manager, to request a non-potable well for watering your grass. And the reason for this restriction is be based on DNR recommendation.
That was good. See, we did the quick turnaround and just took off walking really fast. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? I see none. Kathleen?
I motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance prohibiting construction of wells within the city limits for use as a potable water source to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use as a potable water source.
Second.
On the amendment. Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now, voting as amended.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Nice having. Resolution?
I have a resolution approving a bond purchase agreement for general obligation corporate purpose bond series 2017B.
I need a second.
A second.
Thank you.
Trying to keep my comments brief. I realize you guys have had a lot. You can yell at me when I need to taper, Mayor.
Yeah, if I do like this.
Travis Wires, Piper Jaffrey, managing director in our Des Moines office. Today, I just have a brief report. This is kind of part two of your financing for the year. Completed the bond refinancing in February, so you'll be receiving those bond proceeds here within the next two weeks. Again, saving the taxpayers, and the number's going to escape me. I think it was $250,000, around $250,000 on the bond refinancing. And if I missed that number, don't quote me. It's in last month's number, so. What we have tonight, then, is a consideration for your capital improvement plan for financing your upcoming projects, one being the police department project. As you recall, that was a $4 million referendum. City is set to borrow less than $2.2 million on that due to the ability of using economic development dollars that came into the city's budget to reduce the tax asking for the citizens in the community. In addition, you have projects that will be street improvements that will be done throughout the city. Those will be funded with tax increment financing dollars, about $2.6 million a project. So that's a shift from, you know, I guess you call it economic development dollars, so you're not levying property taxes for it. And the way the financing formula works, where these revenues are available, it allows the city to complete projects on a less expensive basis. In other words, you're able to kind of leverage additional resources, both state level, in order to kind of fund your road project. So as opposed to levying the full amount on the taxes, use tax increment financing reduces the tax impact for the owners. And then, your third component on your financing has to do with flood improvements. So this will be $5 million of the $7 million that's budgeted for this year. Again, the repayment source on that are actually dollars that the state has granted you. So those are not dollars that are coming from local development, local resources. Those are actually state dollars that are granted back to you. So the way that works is there's sales tax dollars that are paid to the state as part of the five cent sales tax. So one cent goes to school, five cents goes to the state general fund. The state has determined to reduce the economic impact of future floods within the state of Iowa, created a program to allow grants to certain cities. The city applies for that, and will receive $26.2 million over the next 17 years from the state. So you're leveraging some of those resources moving forward. So just real briefly on the financing results, that's just kind of an overview of what will be done, and I kind of skipped through. And I apologize when you have a landscape package, and then you've got sheets that are portrait, you're going to have to flip a little bit. So I'm just on the sources and uses of funds. That does outline how those resources will be allocated. Your bond proceeds, par amount premium, the city will receive about $9.89 million. Of that, you will fund the projects as well as the cost of issuance associated with the bonds, which came in rate about 1.25% total cost of issuance, so below estimates. One of the things that we've committed to when we work with the city is, obviously, you know, we have an agreement with you. We work to make certain that we're competitive with the market on rate and fees. In this case, we did drop our overall fee from the max contract by $14,000 for this upcoming financing, so. Your next page, then, does give you the bond debt service schedule. That, oh, I guess I should be flipping, sorry. I can't multitask real well. I'm just focusing on talking here. Can I zoom this, or not? No, it doesn't zoom? All right. Well, again, hey, small numbers on a sheet of paper. You guys haven't seen that from me before.
Not in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, so it's been a while. You guys were itching for more. So essentially, this is just what your debt service schedule will look like. One of the things that we've done is matched repayment sources, your tax increment financing revenues. My recollection is that those will be paid out over a 12-year period of time, going out to 2028. So actually, it's a 10-budget years on the tax increment financing. You're out 19 years on the police department project. That was originally thought to be a 20-year, so we've shortened that a year trying to reduce the overall interest cost for the taxpayers. And then, what you have is then 15 years approximately on the flood mitigation that goes out to 2033. You're going to see that in a couple of pages, but this represents your final debt service schedule from all of those components. Pricing schedule, and the only thing I really want to hit here is your interest rates. One thing that you'll note, again, there's a lot going on here, but I'm going to focus in on two columns. One says rate, one says yield. So rate is what you'll pay the investors. The yield is the actual earnings on the bonds. Your average interest rate that you're paying on this 19-year debt is 2.9%. So very, very low interest rates in the market today. Had really nice support from Iowa financial institutions. You know, I'm happy to report that one of your local banks was able to purchase some of these bonds. They've, you know, I'm not going to go into their inner workings. I don't know their details, but this is one of the first bond issues that they've participated on. And I kind of see that as a vote of confidence for the direction that the city has gone over the past, you know, you go back to 2013 when we looked at, with Stephanie's budget, the deficits, and moving towards eliminating those, you know. So obviously, having a local bank kind of back in the fold is a nice vote of confidence for the financial position that you guys are putting the city in. It's not an easy process. You know, everybody would love taxes to be lower. But part of what you're paying for now is stuff that occurred 10-plus years ago. You happen to be the council that's tasked with the difficult directions. You've held the budget tight for the last five years. You know, you've heard the, I guess you say, the talk of the people of asking for more positions in public safety. You guys have responded to that. You know, certainly, that, you know, one way of looking at that is a property tax increase. And then, obviously, you guys have gone through the cutting in years in the past. So, you know, whatever your local politics stuff has been with that, you know, that's a decision that you guys arrive at. The one thing I kind of do want to hammer in here, kind of at the end, is that what you're doing right now on the capital is not increasing your property taxes that you're levying. All of this has been built into your long-term plan. The projects that you're contemplating have been built into your financing model so as to not increase property taxes. If you recall from our presentation back in November, the city is currently targeting two different years where they will be dropping the debt service levy in the amount that you're asking for capital. Some of that is predicated on the growth that will occur from some of your economic development initiatives. So you're looking at approximately four years out, looking at a 40-cent decrease. And then, I think it was another five years out, an additional 40 cents down. So those are things that the city's looking at, you know, as just kind of big picture from reviewing your capital side. You know, sometimes these, you know, one-time increases, they occur for a standpoint. If you get a nice year of growth, is it possible that you're able to look at reducing that property tax rate next year on this debt service side? Some of that is just contingent on your project cost, and where they come in. You know, I feel obliged to hit the sewer side just from the standpoint of, you know, guys, you guys have been in advance of working on those increases, gotten your rates in place where you're now just asking for inflationary cost increases. So, you know, by and large, your long-term plan right now contemplates the ability to take on the $30 million order that you guys have from the DNR EPA, without asking for additional dollars outside of an inflationary increase for the budget. So again, maybe a little more than I meant to say, but I just kind of weigh in the overall budget standpoint and where this looks. Certainly, there's a breakout sheet of those payment sources that I illustrated earlier. You know, one thing the city's been committed to doing is not backloading debt. You will see on the sales tax TIF component that there's no principal for six years. That's because the city is planning on not borrowing for that next phase of project. So in a sense, you're trying to lock in interest rates right now where they're at a very low level, and use cash to pay for the projects when you get to '23 and '24. So that's why that debt service schedule appears that way. But ultimately, it was a discussion of, you know, the best route is that we're going to pay cash for this next project, lock in the long-term rates where we can, in order to avoid, you know, a couple of years down the road, you know, borrowing for the current projects, and then force, or paying cash for current projects, and then the next five years out, looking at borrowing again. So just a nuance in kind of mitigating some of the city's risk long-term for interest rates. As far as looking at your overall capital plan, you know, I provided these updates. You know, one of the things you've obviously seen before is its valuation history. You know, one of the things that you would say is that really your property tax valuations have not been increasing at a very rapid rate over the past 10 years, averaging about 2.3% growth, which is going to be below the statewide average on valuation growth. Couple of years in particular where you had some, you know, rough years as far as the budget is concerned. So if you look at that box where it says, I'll look at that third from the bottom. You see change in taxable valuation, and the taxable valuation with no aggregate TIF. And you can see those years that you're at .73, .62, 1.1, 1.3, a negative year. Those are the years, that's the actual valuation that you've been basing your budget on. Evaluations off to the side include all of your economic development initiatives, which is what has been driving, the small amount of growth that you've had in the city has been due to the economic development within the tax increment financing areas. So I'll move quick here. You can't read any of this, so, even on the printed copy. You know, this is just essentially your long-term debt profile. You know, one of the things that we've been talking about for years is that, you know, based on some debt structure in prior years, you're working through a little bit of a plateau. You know, given no other economic activity, you know, you would see about an eight-cent decrease in your debt service levy rate next year, and then, you know, declining thereafter. We're looking at fiscal '22 as being the potential first year to really drop that by a considerable amount, given some of the street projects that you guys have on your priority list, as well as the bridges. So you are using other resources to repay debt. You know, this is not all coming from the property taxpayers. You know, out of the 50.4 million dollars of total principal and interest, roughly half of that is coming from other resources, including tax increment financing dollars, sewer revenues, local option sales tax, and then the sales tax TIF, as well as different abatements or reimbursements from companies. So I'm going to kind of slide through the rest of these. Debt limit was the one thing that you guys hit on. At the time of issuance of this debt, you will momentarily go over your 70% target. After making your June 1 principal payment, you'll be back down to about 65%. One-time increase above, but then you fall back below your policy targets. So any questions? I guess, you know, in summary, just to kind of hearken back to what took place today, what you have in front of you is approval of a bond purchase agreement with Piper Jaffrey as the underwriter on your bonds. Average rate was right around 2.9%. And as far as looking at, you know, the market, we did see some increase last week with respect to treasury rates. So if you could have picked a sweet spot, might have been a few days sooner. But you guys have been fortunate. You know, I do think part of that is due to what's happening at the Fed level right now. You know, there has been a lot of indication that rates will be raised by the Fed at the meeting next week, so we're seeing a little bit of a run-up on that now. You know, I think, you know, hindsight being 2020, a couple of months from now, I think that these rates might likely be lower than what you would otherwise be locking in. So any questions from Mayor, Council?
You guys good?
Jim, you got anything to add?
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
All right.
Travis, we appreciate you. Good job.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience? Okay, wonderful.
Leon Jayhan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I have a number of questions and perhaps comments. First of all, these bonds, when would they be issued?
As far as the receiving bond proceeds?
Well, I'm talking, you haven't sold the 2017B bonds yet, have you?
Yes, that's what was happening today with the approval of the bond purchase agreement. It'll occur tonight. Interest rates will be locked in.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to figure out what we're doing tonight with this resolution.
We're approving the sale of bonds tonight.
Even though they've already been sold?
The bonds during the prior period, what occurs during the day today is that we are marketing to investors. Those investors-
Travis, can I have you come over by the microphone?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we receive indication from investors during the day on interest rates. And based on what occurs tonight, those bonds would be considered sold should the council move forward with the resolution.
That answers one question because I see interest rates going up, so the Federal Reserve isn't done yet. They're going to hit us again and again and again.
You know that.
Then the next question I have is, when we're looking at the financing here on the sales tax increment financing, if that increment doesn't materialize, are the citizens of Burlington on the hook for that debt?
Yes.
I guess in light of what's happening in the Iowa economy with farm prices, I'm a little worried. And I guess lastly, I have a problem with trying to corral the Mississippi River. Look at what's happening already with the flooding situation. I think it's just going to get worse as the years go on. I don't know that this is a good investment.
Thank you, Mr. Jayhan.
Anybody else have any comments over the obligation purpose bonds? Okay, Council?
Down here.
Only to thank Travis. You've stuck with this stuff for the last five, six years, and I really appreciate all the work you've done.
Okay, anything else? Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, good deal.
Your Honor, I'm going to approve the white boxing of the depot at the area formerly known as Greer's Restaurant.
Second.
Elizabeth, come first.
Why don't we have Nick go ahead and make a presentation in regards to, just a reminder of what the proposal is?
Eric, could you throw that up for me? Just a reminder of what the white boxing entails. It includes new gas service, new electrical service, new sewer service. It includes new doors, windows, and then sidewalk to and around the area as Greer's Restaurant. It also includes some internal plumbing issues that I foresee happening and then also a 20% contingency. So if there's any questions on that specifically, but I also, I haven't been keeping this in my back pocket or anything, but I haven't talked about it because it isn't something that is a, isn't a concrete thing that could happen. There is the potential that we can apply for an HDRP grant for some of these items, of which would include windows and doors and sidewalk, and potentially also couple that in with the-
Sidewalks covered in that too?
Based on my conversation with Zach James, the director for, or the planning director, he believes it would be. But then we also have the costs, the updated costs and what the floor would cost, and so hopefully, we could apply that for that all as a one grant.
You're talking about the floor in the great room?
Correct.
What, someone asked me, is this area going to have their own separate utility meters and water meters and-
They will have their own separate water meter.
And gas?
Electrical and gas will all be separate services brought over and they will have separate meters.
Can you answer this too? And I know you've answered it before, I just need for you to answer it.
No, not a problem.
Right. For white boxing this building, what are we doing special for Greer's that we wouldn't be doing for anybody else?
There is nothing specific for a restaurant. The electrical 200 amp is probably fairly typical of any sort of other development that would need to go in there. In all honesty, a restaurant potentially could use the use of more electricity, a 400 amp. But in conversations with Mr. Murray, that wasn't needed. The only thing that may be seen as kind of a specific thing for the restaurant is the sewer lateral going out into the grass and then cutting back. That does give the potential space for a grease trap that would be required for the restaurant. But after speaking with my property maintenance manager and talking about the issues underneath of the building, I don't feel comfortable saying that the lateral attachment could happen underneath the building, regardless if it was a restaurant, with the need of a grease trap or not. So these items on my list are for basically getting the facility able to be rented.
Okay, okay. So I just want to reiterate, so the white boxing that is being proposed isn't any greater than what would happen if it was a bookstore?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, did you have any discussion with Matt in regards to a compromise situation that we could look at in regards to white boxing costs, trying to put a cap on it?
I did. From the cost of the white boxing, the cost of the white boxing would not be any different. It would be the amount of obligation that the city would contribute towards that white boxing process. You know, we talked about what that would mean and if the city were to, if the white boxing process would cost above and beyond that 120 that Matt and I talked about, that he would potentially cover the rest of that and then therefore reducing the rate of the lease to reflect that. So I don't want to sound like I went and negotiated for him, but I just, we talked about a number and then talked about something that would be kind of a little more realistic in the ballpark of where he thought the white boxing process was. Probably not that far off of where, you know, you see the 120, 122,000, and then you add my contingency upon it, and then you get to the, you know, the 146, so.
You also have the ability to potentially go after HRDP funds?
I just talked about that while you were out of the room.
I should have stayed.
And I don't-
Care to hear that, James?
I don't have that amount that would be available here tonight. I think that the max total would be around 55,000, and maybe Cindy could help me out with that. Do you know?
50,000.
50,000. Yeah, that's right. They allow for up to $100,000 for an application, but anything above 50 kind of gets passed on and they go for some of the smaller projects, so they can get a number of them rolled out once.
I think the, one of the things, if you do move forward with this, whether it's presented or with an amendment to change the terms in here, we are going to have to work with Matt in regards to what those lease terms are. We really haven't talked at all about what lease terms are outside of saying that we want to make sure that it's a fair market rent, appropriate amount. And we just have to see what mechanisms, if we do have a cap that's on there, what mechanisms we'd have to have in place to make sure that we keep involving that too.
When you say bring electrical and you're, we're just bringing the electric into the building, the rest of the electrical work will be up to whoever is renting that space, correct?
Correct.
Same way with the water, we'll bring the water service in and from the shut-off valve inside the building through the rest of that section of the building, it'll be up to whoever the developer is to put that where he wants it, correct?
Correct.
And we're just going to supply a lateral sewer line and all of the connections to the lateral sewer line will be, and the interiors, plumbing work will be up to the developer to do, correct? We're not doing any-
I have some numbers in there just because the sewer is kind of one of those things that I don't know what's going to happen once you start getting underneath there. I feel as though you cut some of that old cast out, some of that, I think it's concrete underneath the tile, but my concern is, is if you start getting in there, that you, that potentially could fall through. And I don't know how you're going to punch through the lower levels to get out into the yard. I shouldn't say I don't know how, I don't know what that's going to entail, so therefore, I have some money built into here for interior plumbing. But yes, I would bring it, we would bring a stub in. Matt's plans would be to use the existing penetrations. I hope that can be done. So I hope that answers that. That was awfully complicated to answer.
No, you're good with that. I would also say that talking about the lease at this point is a little premature because we're talking about white boxing that into that building and the lease negotiations haven't even taken place yet. Our objective is to white box this building and then if you've got someone that wants to lease that, and I know Matt does, then you start talking about the lease. I think that was Jim's goal when he amended that last time. So there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee we've got anybody going in that at this point. We are going to white box this building with this action, if we approve this action. And then if we can come to an agreement on a lease with Matt, then he's going to put a project in there. So I would say that if we pass this, that we don't allow the expenditures of the funds until we know we have a lease with somebody. And I think that's going to help satisfy maybe some of the folks about spending, expending money on that building until we have an agreement with someone that wants to go in there. Make sense? Or did I confuse you? Makes sense to me?
Anything else we need to add or? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I called your name and then I didn't flip out. Come on down here, Elizabeth.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council people. I'm a little long here, unfortunately. I'll try to read it as fast as I can. It only takes me about three minutes, so. My name is Elizabeth Van Blex Sally. I live at 501 Harrison Avenue. I'm a member of the Economic Development and Advisory Committee and have been since its inception. The purpose of this committee, as you know, is to review all requests for the expenditure of local option, sales tax funds that are set aside by the City Council for economic development purposes, and make a recommendation to the City Council regarding such expenditures. On February 1st, 2017, this committee was approached by Matt Murray, who has developed a plan to restore Greer's Restaurant. We listened to Mr. Murray's proposal and determined it would encourage new businesses to locate downtown and in turn, increase employment and potentially impact the growth of downtown. Our committee so far has funded 11 projects, five to big businesses, three to feasibility market analyses, and one to the riverfront, and one to Capital Theater, and one to the railroad quiet zones. Our study cost of the fund, $85,000 for the hydroelectric project, never materialized, I'm making a comparison here. The council approved nearly $150,000 for studies, none of which created jobs, and for instance, the hydroelectric project. Greer's will also be leasing from the city approximately $1,250 a month, but you just discussed that, and I don't know if that's a correct amount or not. Any additional tenants will add to that amount, and these funds go to the City General Fund. In an abstract from a working paper, "The Role of Small Business and Economic Development of the U.S. From the End of the Korean War to the Present," written by Major L. Clark III and Mr. Saad, it was released in September of 2010. From the Office of Advocacy, U.S. Small Business Administration, it was argued, "We contend that small business is an engine of economic growth and job creation and that by tapping it delays rather than promotes growth. We argue that small business was not given a chance to act as multiplier and that if the U.S. is to continue to grow, small businesses must be part of the mantle to lead it to the next level. Otherwise, the past is prologue." In a Forbes article written by William Dunkelberg, June 2015, he states, "Population growth provides support for growth in the small business sector. With 3 million additions each year, the demands for services rose, like haircuts and that type of business, and this demand is to a large degree met by small businesses." In another article, "The Role of Small Business and Economic Development" by Monty Henderson, July 2015, it states, "Prior to the Great Recession, many economic development strategies were based upon company attraction logic, with the goal being to entice large corporations to locate in the community and bring along with them jobs to employ existing and new members of the locale. Like any good competitive adventure, it was, and still is, a very big win for a community to attract a large new business. The professionals in economic development call this 'smokestack chasing,' and it is difficult for most communities to win at, as there are very few candidates with many suitors. During the recession in 2008, many people looked to form small businesses to create their own jobs, to replace what they had lost via corporate downsizing. The entrepreneurs have always been pioneering. Today, the trend is to attract citizens who supply the workforce, which is coveted by existing and new enterprises, which is called quality-of-life approval approach, excuse me. A parallel economic development model is to appeal to the entrepreneurial creative class of entrepreneurs that will start new businesses. 28 million small businesses account for 54% of all U.S. sales, 55% of all jobs are provided by small business. 600,000-plus franchise small businesses in the U.S. account for 40% of all retail sales and provide 8 million jobs. It is much easier to attract, start, and grow small businesses as an economic development strategy than it is to entice a trophy company to the community. They work, live, and provide jobs and add to the tax base. The city has now owned the depot since 1993. In about 2012, someone was inspired to step up and begin a movement to end the deterioration and soon-to-be dilapidated condition of this historically significant building. So far, the city has invested $120,000 in renovations that are currently underway. The proposal has been to white box the building as an added feature to attract more businesses to the site. If the city can move its direction momentarily to the downtown and away from large and medium-sized corporations and fast food enterprises, the Roosevelt corridor down there, and envision an activated downtown with flourishing small businesses, it should be a logical move to make the investment in the depot. The investment will assist in Greer's project and entice and encourage other entrepreneurs to move to downtown. The vision of the riverfront is only the beginning, but if that and other visions aren't realized, the growth of our downtown will be spymied by continued decay and demolition of the very assets that make our town what it is. I am asking you, City Council, to reverse course on this project and see the handwriting on the wall. Growth comes when people have the passion to take some risk, make a decision, and put footsteps to the vision and bring Burlington back to what it was in its heyday and a bustling hub of activity and community. Award the $146,000 to this project- Award the one-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars to this project, which is what they asked for our, from our committee. The funds are already set aside. The Economic Development Committee approved them for recommendation, and it is time to realize the growth of our downtown has begun. Greer's should be treated no differently than any company, large or small. Large companies ask for TIF and tax abatement and, at significant cost to the tax base for ten to twenty years. Greer's is asking for funds that are, that already exist and will not impact future revenue. I don't think. I didn't do any homework on that part. Please reverse your course and encourage downtown growth and investment through the investment of a hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars to this project. Thank you.
Very well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Mike Crowder.
Mike Crowder. Mike Crowder, Burlington, Iowa. I'm all for this. My question is, I'm still under the impression that this building still floods. Is that correct? I think we got the cart in front of the horse, is all I'm saying. Do we have a flood protection plan in for this building if we're gonna dump this kinda money into it? I'm not, I wanna see that building filled. You know, I, I'm, I'm all about small business. I am small business. But, uh, my concern is, we're fighting a flood plan right now, and then we're trying to build something nice, beautiful, and I appreciate them for wanting to do that, but I just, it's gonna flood again, guys. That's all I got.
And, yeah, that's, that is something that everybody has considered and talked about.
I mean, is there, is there a dirt levy you can put around it, or, I mean, I don't know, you know, who, who? Is the city gonna have to protect that if the water starts coming up, or?
We don't have a way to protect that at this point. That is built into the, the flood mitigation plan as we move forward, twenty-twenty-three. It's designed to have, uh, a flood, flood burn built around it to, to be able to, to cover that. Uh, until then, we, we don't have the ability to provide adequate coverage around it. You didn't say we do, Nick?
HESCO.
We, we.
We have HESCOs.
Depending on how many HESCO barriers are available, we might, we would have some availability to put that. It, it's a tight space to try and get it in between that asphalt. Um, and, and just not knowing the timing of what our temporary flood wall is gonna take, um, to set up. The, the depot does not flood until, I think it's twenty-four, five, or something like that. So there would be some time to be able to prepare for that.
Once, yeah, once we have the, once you have the new flood wall in this next year, and you don't have to have as many HESCOs, but you still, we still don't know how that's gonna transition.
There, there's still be needs for some HESCOs on the flood wall on the north side of the port, um, and on the south side of the auditorium, um, more, more by the lift station than the actual auditorium. There, there will still be a need for, uh, HESCOs, but we don't know, I don't think we know what that quantity is based on how it's gonna wrap around with the, with the permanent wall. So, but there, there probably would be some available to help with the depot, but I just don't have that number right now.
And then is that an expense to the city, or is that an expense to the person leasing the building?
It's our building.
City.
It's our building.
They're leasing it.
Our, our portion's gonna be our cost. Their portion's gonna be theirs, but that's gonna be a fight between insurance companies, too.
Becky Anderson, two-eighteenth South Sixth Street. Uh, I wanna speak in favor of the depot. I've kinda been, in the beginning, kinda back and forth, but I like this plan. I feel that, um, this is a responsibility of the city to bring this to a whitebox state. And considering the flooding, and I look at those list of things there, um, you know, the depot is one of the last things flooded. Would that affect the electrical service? I don't think so. I don't think it would affect the doors and a lot of the things on that list. I don't think it would affect. I mean, I think it might be a problem for the owner of the restaurant. Um, the other thing I wanna say, and it kinda goes with what Liz was talking about, the big problem we have downtown in developing buildings, our owners have buildings. They want to rent them, but they don't want to bring them to a condition that people can use them, and they need to whitebox them. I think this would set a good example to people for the, you know, that own buildings downtown, that this is what an owner needs to do if you want to see improvements in our downtown and development in our downtown. Um, I've whiteboxed a couple of buildings, and I think this price is prudent. I think that Nick is looking at things that could come up, and I know those things come up in an old building. But, um, I think that's a good list, and, you know, it may well come in below that. I think the HRDP grant would be great to apply for, but I think you have to go ahead and say you're gonna do this before you can apply for that. And I was kinda thinking, you couldn't do sidewalks, but yeah, you can do sidewalks with that. So, um, I think there'd be a good chance for that, and I hope that you'll reconsider and vote in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Dance machine?
I'm glad you remember that.
I'll never forget that, my friend.
Neither will I, believe me. Uh, Steve Freyvert, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. Just wanna very quickly state that our Board of Directors, uh, supports, uh, the, the advice of the Economic Development Committee. Uh, we would like to see this project done. Uh, Liz and Becky did a great job, uh, kind of laying out the, the ideas behind that. Um, also wanna point out that this would be an investment in something you already own, which is another benefit to all of us as taxpayers.
Thank you, Steve.
Leon Chehan, eighteen-twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. As you well know, I have a problem with developing anything that's in a floodplain. I, I just, you're not gonna corral the mighty muddy Mississippi River. You're throwing your money away. The reality is, you should have never bought that station in the first place.
Thank you, sir. Audience, are we good? Bless you. Counsel?
Your Honor, I'd like to suggest an amendment. I move to replace the one-hundred-and-forty-six thousand four hundred dollars with a hundred-and-twenty thousand in the last two paragraphs of this resolution.
Second.
Moved in second.
Yeah, the object is to limit our liability to a hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Okay. Kathleen, can we vote on the amendment, please?
Okay, this is on the amendment. Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Okay, now we're going to, uh, vote as amended.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Your Honor, I move to approve the naming of depositors for deposit of the city of Burlington.
Second. Moved in second. Stephanie? Take your time, Steph.
Okay, this'll be nice and short. Uh, this is just an update. Um, we have this resolution in place now. Um, the change is at Two Rivers Bank. Right now, the maximum deposit was set at thirty million. And currently, um, we've got a lot of money coming in. Um, so right now, we have twenty million at Two Rivers on, like Travis said, on March fifteenth, we're gonna get seven-point-one million. That's the refunding bond. We'll get the money in on the fifteenth. It will be in our hands till June first, when we pay off the bond. So it's just real short.
So we can feel rich for a hot minute.
Yeah, and then we'll, the bonds that were just approved tonight, that's another nine-point-six million that's coming in within the next month. And then property taxes will be about five million that we'll get in April. So thirty million wasn't just fitting our situation for the next few months. So I went ahead and up that to fifty million. All the other banks have stayed the same.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Is there a reason why that particular bank gets the increase? The others are the same?
Well, that's the bank that we have all our deposits going into, and we earn interest there, and that's the bank we use for our deposits.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Yes, Leon did raise his, I mean, did I say that out loud here? I was just playing with you. You don't just mess around. Uh, counsel?
No.
Kathleen, let's take a vote.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. We made it through, guys. What phone is that? That's a cool ringer. That's cool. All right. Said, everybody tells me that. Listen, uh, this time we're gonna have comments from the audience. If there's something that didn't get addressed, uh, we'll give you opportunity now, and, and we are. Yes, sir? Come on, come on down. I'm gonna ask you if it's something that we have addressed already. Uh, I'm gonna ask that you, uh, if you do have.
Don Draymond, one-sixteen Greenbrier. I thank you folks for moving forward on the depot. Two things. Have you considered tax fees?
Don.
Is available at low income? Uh, the other is, would you consider the depot for senior citizens?
Don.
Do you have a question?
Don, you can't ask.
Give it some consideration if you would.
Don, you have to address the council.
Okay. I would like to have senior citizens consider the depot as an advocate of continuing. Where that to happen, it puts a major building available for retail. So, um.
Oh, okay.
And we'd appreciate it. Give some consideration.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Okay, Don just broke off some knowledge. All right. Anybody else from the audience? Comments or concerns? Anything we haven't addressed? Looking around, yeah, looking around. Come, come on, you don't have to give me a hard time.
Leon Chehan, eighteen-twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. Again, I'm not gonna talk about finances anymore. Can you say yay?
Yay.
I just wanna bring up, in, in light of current politics, I, I see the rising ugliness against diversity. I, I'm sick of it. I, I wanna see a diverse community. I wanna see us all get along.
Well said, Leon. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, Liz.
Anybody else from the audience? Who could, who's gonna follow that up? Anybody else? Comments? Okay, thank you for your patience, you guys. Thank you so much. Mr. Teslin, anything for opposed? Kathleen, are you good to go?
Good.
Bless you. Counsel lady?
Yep, I just wanted to comment on, um, how everyone voted with, uh, the whiteboxing. Uh, just so I, saying that the reason that a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars was there was for things that aren't foreseen, things that come up that we had no idea about. And the fact that the Economic Development Committee had already approved that amount from their own funds, uh, it says something to me. But I'm glad we are moving forward on it, at least to whitebox it. That's it.
Appreciate you. Okay, I just want to say, Katie Music's gonna be coming back next week. She's been gone for a while. She just had a baby, so we're looking forward to coming back, Katie Music. Uh, you have been missed, but, uh, while you've been gone, we did have Debbie Wagenbach, who is, uh, top-notch, and this is her last week. So as will be welcome, and Katie will be saying goodbye to Debbie, but I, I do wanna say what a, what a blessing, uh, it has been to have her, and, uh, the chocolate cake that she made is spectacular. Um, also, um, want to, uh, say that Snow Bowl will be, uh, this Thursday, uh, at seven PM. It'll be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday down at the Memorial Auditorium. Um, uh, I will be, I'm the grand marshal Thursday night. I'll be giving the opening prayer, so come on down. Um, I know that you'll all come down because I'm giving the opening prayer. All right. Okay. And then the. Go ahead. I'm sorry. And then the other thing was, uh, I'm trying to read my writing here. I, oh, I don't know what that is. But the other thing I did wanna say was to, uh, just wanna give a shout-out to the Burlington Police Department, uh, for helping out, uh, during the, the, uh, funeral on Friday, uh, for the Burlington Fire Department, uh, for representing, and also to our chief. Uh, my son said, "I was watching your face. I saw you get emotional. The chief got you, didn't he?" I said, "No," I said, "the chief didn't get me," but yeah, the chief got me. I, I, I just wanna say thank you for, uh, that was, that was well said, well said. So I just appreciate some of the people that we've, uh, that we really have around, and I know it gets, the things get tense around this time of the year, around budget season, but we've got wonderful staff, wonderful people. I still think Burlington is a great place to live, work, and play. I don't just wear the bracelet. I believe it. That's all I've gotta say for tonight. Uh, Jim Davidson?
To me, this has probably been the most, uh, difficult budget time that, that I've been in. This is my ninth time I've done this, and so I wanna thank you all for hanging in there, staff. I know it's been strenuous on you, and so I appreciate that. Thank you, Jim.
Counselor?
I'll echo what you said, and then I'll say I think we should adjourn after we get through it, Jim.
All righty.
I do have one thing.
Yes, sir?
Uh, I just wanna encourage counsel to look up and read workforce housing tax credits, um, affordable housing before we get into that, uh, project on the third of April.
Mr. McGregor?
I just wanted to talk about some of the traffic light issues that we're having. Um, as you might have noticed, uh, the Central Street Agency, Washington Overpass, um, has been having some difficulties. It's on a timer right now. Um, there's a camera that's out, and I, as Councilman Scott, I actually lied to you. Um, that one probably will be looked at this week. Sorry, I shouldn't say that, so.
No.
Um, we, we actually have another issue on the agency in Roosevelt intersection, and that's the one the camera's gonna be replaced this week. The crew that's coming in to do that will take a look, um, at the overpass, um, lighting, air, lighting problem. Um, and then we also had a vehicle strike, the, uh, I think it's a vehicle, the, uh, West Avenue, West Burlington Avenue closet. So we've had plenty of lighting issues, but please bear with us. We're trying to get them fixed.
Excellent. Well done. Again, wanna say thank you to all of you. So glad to see my friend Helen Rollins. Thank you for coming down tonight. Uh, oh, yeah, Jim Davidson.
Hey, you don't want me to talk.
Uh, James Bruno.
That's right. Um, Midwest Magic, you guys got a game?
Yes.
Are you? Police department ready?
No.
Appreciate your honesty on that.
That's Mar- Sunday, March twenty-sixth, out at the high school. One o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, four o'clock. I gotta change that on my schedule. So that's a big deal. I know that you guys have been practicing. They've, you, you think you're gonna win this year. They've been prac- they've been practicing about an hour and a half, let the other, the opponents know. They've been out there. They think they're, you're gonna win this time, so we'll see if that happens.
It's not gonna happen.
Uh, Chamber Press Conference next Tuesday afternoon, the Alliance Room. Uh, two, two o'clock, Tuesday, March fourteen. So encourage you to be there. They have a, a ma- they have a, some, pretty, pretty special announcement for our community. So it'll be good to, good to hear what they have to say.
When is this?
Next Tuesday, March fourteen at two o'clock. Um, and that'll follow up on a couple of positive news items that they've been able to put out in the last couple of weeks. We won the Big Muddy Trophy.
Second year in a row.
Second year in a row. You will not be traveling down to Louisiana this time?
No, I will not be traveling onto, uh, Louisiana this time.
They're gonna become, they're coming up here. There'll be a cer- ceremony.
But that's huge. I'm glad you brought that up, and people will say, "Well, that's not that big of a deal." It's huge. It's huge. We've, we, there's so much to be proud about in Burlington. I know everybody isn't happy, and everybody isn't seeing the train moving the way that they want, but there's so much to be proud about in Burlington. There's so much to be excited about, and things are moving in the right direction, so, uh, sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, the Big Muddy Trophy is looking at the per capita economic development projects that have occurred in all the communities up and down the Mississippi River. And two years in a row now, we've come out by Site Selection Magazine as the top community for economic development. Uh, Site Selection Magazine also does a measurement of the micropolitans. Uh, there's five-hundred-and-thirty-six mi- micropolitan areas within the country. For the fifth year in a row, we're in the top twenty micropolitans for economic development.
That's huge.
Activity. So we've just had a good, solid string of, uh, projects. Uh, this last year has seen not so, not the, the major new, uh, company coming to town, but several small expansions that have really added up to some significant activity. So we do have a lot that's going on that's, that's worthwhile. And last but not least, I am on the air, on the radio on Wednesday this time, so that's it.
With Rob Sussman and beautiful downtown Burlington. Okay, can I get a motion, then?
What?
It's been moved.
Oh, second.
Looking second. Kathleen, take it.
Davidson?
The wrong person made the motion. I don't know.
You just won't know.
Fleming? McCambell?
Absolutely.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.